Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. Please join me in a moment of prayer or thoughtfulness. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings of this life, including our ability to meet here tonight in freedom. Guide us in our thoughts and deliberations that we may make the best decisions for current and future residents of Morrisville. We also ask for your comfort and protection for those throughout the world who are working for peace and our first responders. Protect those in danger and comfort those who are suffering. We ask these things in your name. Before we proceed tonight, I think we may be welcoming some members of the audience who are perhaps here to see an example of how the Planning and Zoning Board functions. We hope we'll provide you a good example, no guarantees. We tend to have a recess around 8:00. And if any of you would like to talk to us individually around that time, that might be very appropriate. We have a full agenda, so it may be a little bit late if you want to stay to the end of the meeting and talk to us. It depends on how we do for timing. So we're going to move on to our adoption of agenda. Any changes to the agenda from the staff's side?
Just me on the first?
Okay. I had a request from our super administrator to do the swearing in first.
We'll do it for the agenda item.
Sorry?
We'll just do the swearing in prior to that specific agenda item.
The swearing in, I think, was for the alternates to become full members. Which seemed redundant to me, but there was a request for that.
We can handle that after the meeting for anybody who's late. And then we'll have a second swearing in for the S U P later on this evening.
Very good. All right. So, adoption of the agenda. Courtney, any changes from your side?
We have made a couple of modifications this evening to add items related to actions taken at council earlier this week. So the modified agenda is in front of you. That modified agenda is also federal mine this evening. So the one that's before you don't mind is the one that I'd asked that you adopt this evening.
Are we comfortable with that on the board's side?
Yes.
Then I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda that's in front of us for tonight's meeting, January 11, 2018.
Have a second.
My second.
One in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is adopted, thank you. Next item is the approval of the minutes. Any changes to the minutes from board members? So will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from December.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right from Ms. Carey, thank you. Now we're going to move to item five, which is our presentation section. And I guess we're going to ask Brad, who we don't see very often these days, but welcome, Brad, to give us an overview.
Sure this mic's on? Great. All right, so I am here today to talk about the Wake County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan Progress Report, which you all should have in front of you. Before we get into that actual report, I'm just going to give you a little background on the actual hazard mitigation plan itself. So in the year 2000, Congress passed a law that the Disaster Mitigation Act essentially requires each local jurisdiction in the United States to have an adopted hazard mitigation plan. So this is in order to be eligible for disaster mitigation funds in the wake of a disaster. So in 2015, Wake County, all 12 jurisdictions, had their own individual, unique mitigation plan. And FEMA had to review each of those 12 for compliance individually. Luckily, in 2013, FEMA gave us a grant, or gave Wake County a grant, to do a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. So one unified plan for all 12 jurisdictions in Wake County. And that planning process lasted between 2013 and 2014. It allowed Wake County, that grant money allowed Wake County to hire a consulting firm, in this case Atkins Consulting. And Atkins Consulting worked with representatives of the local jurisdictions, all 12 jurisdictions, to create a draft hazard mitigation plan. We had the public involved at every step of the way. We had every consultant and local representative meeting workshop. We had the public sit in on those, as well as the steering committees. And the purpose of the steering committee was, we'd essentially create these modules of work for them to review, and then they would send it back to us for any modifications. Eventually, we had a working draft. We took that draft to the public twice for two public hearings. And after that was done, we had a final draft created in December of 2014. So within that 1,500-page document, we have a section for Morrisville. So the plan is broken up into 12 sections, one jurisdiction. And so we have a specific section that we reviewed. And then 2015, May of 2015, our council adopted the hazard mitigation plan as our own, the Wake County Hazard Mitigation Plan as our own. So that has a five-year expiration date. So around 2020, we're going to have to create a new hazard mitigation plan. And we are currently working with Wake County to explore ways to do another multi-jurisdictional And within that plan, in the Morrisville section, there's kind of a general chart of the different disasters that pose risk to Morrisville. We have the high-risk, the usual suspects, thunderstorms, hurricanes, tornadoes, floods, things like that, and the more or less likely events to occur, earthquakes, landslides, and each with a respective risk associated. And further through that section, towards the end, we have implementation items that are mentioned as ways the town can sort of mitigate these disasters, and policies that can help our community be more resilient and safe from potential hazards. And so those are broken up into five categories. You've got prevention policies, property protection policies, natural resource protection policies, emergency services policies, and public education and awareness policies. Now what we do with our annual report that we give to Planning, Zoning Board, and Town Council is we take those implementation policies and talk about them briefly in this report on how we're trying to achieve them, or how we're meeting them on an ongoing basis. And so every year, we just try to update everyone on how we're implementing this larger hazard mitigation plan. So in the interest of time, I will not go through every single hazard mitigation plan implementation item, but I am happy to take questions about the report that you have in front of you. A lot of these are out of my area of expertise, and I rely on a lot of information from other departments within the town, but anything that I can't answer, I can certainly get back to you on. So I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Very good. And we were expecting you were going to go through all 1,500 pages, so disappointed. Lee, any questions or comments on it?
No comments.
No, we're going to think pretty straightforward.
So were there any items in January till December 2017?
Yeah, we didn't have any, anything exceptionally crazy. We had a significant rain event, and that happened on April 24th through 25th. We accumulated almost seven inches of rain, which is a lot for two days. But fortunately, there was no significant flooding. There was some minor flooding around Crabtree Creek, as per usual, but no significant property damage, as far as we know, or at least reported property damage.
Good. All right. Any particular action that you need from us, Brad?
Yep, just to hear it.
Okay. We appreciate that, thank you very much. So we're going to move on to item seven. And if you would like to, or Courtney, you're going to introduce this topic.
Well, good evening, Board, and glad to see we have a full board this evening as well. What I'm going to do is kind of go over five, well, four areas, and the last part will be questions and comments. I'm going to go through and capture all the directives that this board gave us back in December to make sure that we have accurately captured them. Then we're going to go over some new discussion points. That includes new ones, as well as ones that we did not finish at the December meeting. We're going to go over any future input opportunities for the public, and then talk about some of the next steps moving forward. So direction topic number one was intersection improvements. As you may remember, we went through several parts of, or the entire table that was related to intersection improvements, and talked on some other points. So the first point was, is we will be adding an item that will prepare an entire corridor access management plan for Morrisville Parkway. There were several concerns brought up by this board regarding current median cuts, as well as some line of sights at existing intersections, and the board felt that it was worth adding a policy statement in, so we could hopefully be ahead of the game for any potential safety features, or hazards that are out there. On the second item list, add an action item regarding an intersection safety improvement program. So you really built off of number one listed on this presentation, and said, you know what, it's not just Morrisville Parkway that we know there's problems. And we listed another ones, but decided that we just needed to come up with an entire program for the town. And so that too will be added into the plan. The third one, and I just included the table here that we used for our discussion last time, and this table really summarizes the modifications. We added prioritization, and then we removed two, because they really are funded projects. And if you also remember, we added, there was a grade separation at Morrisville Carpenter Road, but we've added actually intersection improvements at grade as well. And the at-grade one was short-term, whereas the grade separation was long-term. The next discussion, our direction item, was road connectivity enhancing projects. As you remember, we went through the entire list that was currently in the plan, and talked on each connection one by one. What was agreed to is to remove figure 3.7. It created frankly some uncertainty, the way it was presented in the plan, and some clarity issues. And ultimately, those items would be incorporated into what's currently figure 3.8, or 3-8, I should say, in the September draft plan. The next item was to keep all the current additional connectivity enhancing projects that were in the plan. You didn't add any, and you didn't remove any of the actual projects. You did select to go ahead and remove the proposed Green Drive, Clements Drive connection. And you also felt that Millicent Drive, as well as Stockton Gorge, would need additional study down the road. So Millicent Drive is specifically to further study it, to see if it's a road, greenway, or complete abandonment. And then Stockton Gorge Drives, it had to do with 147. We don't know the ultimate design of 147, and so we don't know if it would have any connection point on there at all. The next was NC 147. And you confirmed Town Council's direction that they provided at their actual, I believe it was December, meeting. And you also recommended that if you looked at the campus study, it just showed a general connection to Davis, but it didn't align with Little. So you took the council's direction one step further, and said Davis alignment, but it had to be at Little. And then over to direction topic number four for the, oops, Triangle Parkway, excuse me, Triangle Bike Way. You agreed to go ahead and increase the rideaway in the plan on Fort Airport and Slater Road to accommodate the future bike way, and also to add an implementation item that once the plan is finalized, that we will go back and modify our plan to incorporate the new plan. The next direction topic number five was transit accommodations. You wanted an added, policy statement added related to the expansion of bus service and travel lanes for buses. And you wanted those additional, that additional rideaway to be applicable for buses on NC 54 Airport, Davis, and McCrimmon. So now moving on to our new discussion topics. The first one, I had brought back kind of the response area map last time, and told you that we are working on, with the fire and police response times map. I'm going to reiterate again, this map is one piece of information, so I don't want everybody to hang their hat onto it. There's a lot of reasons why you're going to see the colored dots that you are going to see on these plans, but it's just a piece of information. So we have the police department map. So if you look at this map its entirety, I mean, throughout town, some calls are less than three, some are between three and five, and some are then greater than five. I don't think there's necessarily anything surprising coming out of this information. You know, it depends on the number of calls at any given moment, depending on how many people are on duty, depending on the prioritization of the call, depending on where they're actually, happen to be patrolling at a given time. So it's not surprising, the dots really are equally distributed across the town. Then you get to the fire department response time map. So fire departments traditionally are dispatched from the fire station. So this here basically says, the closer you are to the fire station, the better the response time you're primarily receiving as a general rule. There are some outliers, and really, there are a few sections in town that really primarily seem to have the slowest response times, and those are the areas farthest from the station. So I don't think there's really a big surprise on this one either. So there's parts of Kits Creek, parts of Breckenridge, Airport, and when you get over to the I-40, aviation as you're heading towards I-40, and then there's a couple of points within the vicinity of Morrisville Parkway. I don't know that this probably generated any additional information that we probably didn't already know.
Can you interpret where you have a yellow dot, a purple dot, and a green dot, one on top of each other?
So they're layered. So if you have a couple of, so there are points where you'll have multiple blue dots. But if there is a yellow dot, it will be placed higher in the layer. So there's, these are layers. So it's yellow layer, then your green layer, then your blue layer. So there could be three different response times if there's three calls to one point, and it is all address-based.
Is this predicting, or is this of actual calls?
This is actual, these are actual response times between October 2015 and October 2016.
So there could have been a time when somebody just happened to be close by, and then they got right there for another time when they weren't as close, or something?
So if you were to get a phone call in the middle of the night when there's zero traffic, they're going to have a better response time than peak PM traffic. So I mean, that, as I said, there's a lot of things that go into this. So, you know, the fact is, you know, as quicker they can get there, the better, but traffic impacts what type of call, volumes of call. I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into play that we covered last time.
So we also talked about last time, the shared fire response?
There is a shared fire response.
So these dots represent the Morrisville response times to those addresses?
That is correct.
Okay.
So it's when they were officially dispatched to when they officially, you know, arrived on the scene.
Yep, okay.
So if we were concerned about service to the Preston community, for example, then we really should overlay this with the response from Cary, if Cary services them.
So Cary will have dispatch times that different as well. So you could do that? Absolutely. And I think that would also be, you know, applicable to potentially other portions of this map as well.
So, all right, so I got some questions. So this is just Morrisville?
These are Morrisville dispatch calls. So I didn't pull any calls from Durham. I didn't pull any calls from the town of Cary. If you remember, kind of as I previously explained, depending on the type of call, depends on who responds. For any structure fire, it's a Morrisville and the next available, which is traditionally Cary. But it's always two different jurisdictions responding, and then there's a structure fire in Morrisville.
So these are still pretty good general representations, then, of the response time that would be expected?
Yes, I mean--
It's not like there's somehow hidden in this that there really, even though these dots are blue, there was some other jurisdiction getting there faster. This is an actual, these are actual things that happen in real life, so there, you wouldn't expect it to just suddenly be less than that if you added Cary in, I guess is my-- I think it's incorrect maybe.
--piece of information.
Yeah.
So, you know, what would Cary's response time be to Kits Creek if they happen to be responding?
In most cases, the other departments do not arrive before the Morrisville units do. It's normally Morrisville and the other units.
So then these dots are representative generally of the correct response time?
Yes, they represent the response of the first-in unit that arrived on the scene.
Oh, okay. So not just the Morrisville unit, but if a Cary unit got there first, then we're seeing that dot here.
You would not see that here, but what I'm saying is, it's very rare that a Cary unit would arrive before our unit, and there's a lot of reasons behind that.
Yeah.
But it is rare.
I think some of the questions we had previously about how this related to what we're going through with the, with the transportation plan was around Preston, you know, the southwestern point here on Morrisville Parkway, for example, where maybe the High House Firehouse is closer, right, for Cary?
Right.
So maybe that would be a faster in that small area, but--
But, so what is not shown on here is that we're dispatched by two different centers. So for example, when Morrisville gets a call, they're dispatched, and then that call's transferred to Cary. And there's usually at least a three-minute delay before that transfer can occur, before Cary's dispatched. So in your situation where Cary Fire Station may be closer currently today, it doesn't necessarily mean that Cary's getting there first. And it's partly because of the delay in the dispatch for the--
Gotcha. Thank you.
Great to have that expertise from a former fire chief. Thank you.
Yeah, and then the other thing too, I mean, more roads doesn't mean that a color is going to translate from blue to green, or green to yellow. I mean, that is, there's way more pieces to the puzzle, so I just don't want anybody to think that if a road is added, suddenly a dot color's going to change. That may not be the case. Okay, so next is the discussion topic number two, which is Crabtree Crossing Parkway. So give them just a little bit of background. There were several questions regarding the modeling and different potential options that this board brought forward at both the October 12th and the October 9th meeting. And so it really required us to go out and take a look at some additional modeling. So we went back to the same model that we used in the plan, and that is the Triangle Regional Travel Demand Model using the 2010 data. So we ended up doing, if we prepared, two maps for several different scenarios. So each map shows volume, and then that volume is translated into capacity. So every scenario has two maps. One map shows the volume, you'll see the numbers, and the other map shows the colors of capacity. And then those periods were from AM, it's from 6:00 to 10:00 in the model, and PM is from 3:00 to 7:00 in the model. And so all the maps are included in y'all's packet, and are available to the public at its attachment three. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Ben in a second, because he can talk more about the modeling, but this is going to get into, you requested table breakdown of all the different models and how it compared. So the tables provided, you'll see we updated the table this afternoon. There is actually three errors in the table. Corrected the numbers, put them in yellow, and those are highlighted, so everybody can see what was changed out there. I've also gone through, and we've taken snippets of the maps, explaining what each scenario is, so that y'all do not have to go back and flip back and forth maps to this. But we're going to go ahead and go through each one. Again, further breaks on the maps. I'm going to turn this over to Ben. He will go through that, and once we kind of get through the end of that, then I'm going to talk about the next steps with regards to Crabtree Crossing Parkway Extension.
And one other minor change you'll notice on the updated spreadsheet that's attached to the packets for tonight is that the NC 54 North segment that you'll see on these slides, in the original spreadsheet we sent out, we had labeled that as McCrimmon Parkway to Morrisville Carpenter Road. And looking at the models, at the model runs, because of where they split, where the model run splits the segments, we couldn't get an equal segment from McCrimmon to Morrisville Carpenter across all the model runs. So we did make that modification. It's from Perimeter Park Drive down to Morrisville Carpenter Road. Still really close, but just wanted to make that clear, so that all the, but all the numbers are measuring the exact same thing across all the different scenarios. So you'll see in this first comparison, that's looking at Scenario 1 and Scenario 1A, which is, these are the two scenarios where we have some of the best of the world as far as transportation improvements, where we have all of our committed projects. We have Davis Drive, six-laned. We have NC 54, four-laned. We have our Airport Boulevard extension. And then Scenario 1 provides a Crabtree Crossing Parkway extension. Scenario 2 does not have the Crabtree Crossway Parkway extension. And as you'll see here, on both these scenarios, NC 147 is in there because it is a committed project, and it's coded as a four-lane road with the speed limit lowering as you get closer to McCrimmon. So as--
And then connecting directly in at Town Hall--
Yes.
--in this map.
Yep. So as you can see here, you can see some of the differences in AM and PM volumes. So, you know, speaking, of course, to directly to Crabtree Crossing Parkway, you'll see that the volumes do increase from Scenario 1A, which does not have the extension, to Scenario 1 that does have the extension south of Morrisville Parkway. And increases, you know, around, it looks like in these two scenarios, increases around 200 cars a day. And again, that's a modeled scenario, and these numbers are from the model. They're useful, but they're, they are from the model, so, and you have to remember, the model is looking at 2010 as a base year. It's one piece of the information that we're using, but it does give us some good insight into this. And as you can see, with NC 54 being widened out to four lanes, the amount of traffic on it is a lot more, so, which is interesting. And you'll notice on the other scenarios, NC 54 sections, the traffic on those sections decrease a lot, and that's because the NC 54 is not widened in those others, because south of McCrimmon Parkway, there is no committed widening for NC 54. And so essentially, the roads gets, at certain point in the model, when a road gets above capacity, the model stops putting vehicles on that road. And so that's what you'll see happen throughout these models.
Ben, the volumes, that spread over the four hours, like 6:00 to 10:00, and 3:00 to 7:00?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. So these volumes are over that four-hour AM period and four-hour PM period. And, and one thing, you know, to remember too, with the model and the numbers you'll see, is that for, with the exception of NC 54 and Town Hall Drive, the model only provided one volume number for, for these segments. For 54, there were multiple segments in the model, and for Town Hall Drive, there were a couple of different segments in the model. But for 147, and for the Crabtree Crossing Parkway sections, it was only one number. So again, it's, it's what the model thinks would be on that road over those four hours, but there may be more traffic that then diverts off, but it's, so, and, you know, that's just one of the things with the model. It's just, it's an output. So again, just, you know, keep in mind some of the limitations of the model as we look through these numbers. All right. Next up, in the paired scenarios, is 2 and 3, which is just looking at our existing network and our committed, plus our committed projects. And again, 147 is in both these scenarios, because it is a committed project, coded as the same as scenarios 1 and 1A. Scenario 2 has Crabtree Crossing Parkway extension in it. Scenario 3 does not. And again, you'll see some of the differences between the two scenarios for that lowest section of Crabtree Crossing Parkway, south of Morrisville Parkway, where you'll see, you know, Scenario 2 adds between 200 and 300 cars in the AM, and almost 400, or a little over 400 in the PM. And you can see for the other road segments, 147 is 4,000 to 6,000 vehicles. Town Hall Drive's getting to, you know, 3,000 to 5,000. And NC 54 is in that 22,000 to 28,000 range. Any questions on these two? Any questions on these two?
Can I flash back to scenario 1A real quick for a second?
All right, ready to move on?
I think so.
So the next paired scenarios are four and five. And again, these are both, the difference in these two scenarios, it's again our existing and committed network, but no 147. Scenario four has Crabtree Crossing Parkway extension. Scenario five does not have the extension. And you'll see there where the numbers for Town Hall Drive obviously come down because there's no 147 feeding into it. And then, but you'll see there's still a similar impact to Crabtree Crossing Parkway, south of Morseville Parkway, even without 147. When you add that extension and there's still that 300 to 400 vehicles in those AM and PM periods that are being added to it. And then if you look at scenarios four and five, focus in on that scenario for Crabtree Crossing Parkway extension. If you look back at two and three, you'll see the numbers really are around the same, are very similar. So what we can see from this even is that 147 extension doesn't really have a lot of impact even on Crabtree Crossing Parkway extension. So that was one of the really interesting things that even our consultants pointed out when they gave us the models and we were looking at these numbers is that really 147 doesn't have much, according to the model, doesn't have a lot of impact on Crabtree Crossing Parkway extension. And really doesn't necessarily have a lot of impact even on Crabtree Crossing, south of Morseville Parkway. But it does show that Crabtree Crossing Parkway extension does have an impact on Crabtree Crossing Parkway, south of Morseville Parkway. And then moving on to the last paired scenario, six and seven. Again, these are existing and committed networks already in there. And these are the two with 147 aligned out to Davis Drive to intersect Davis Drive at Little Drive. And then it does have that Town Hall Drive extension connector from 147 down to McCrimmon Parkway. In both these scenarios, scenario six has Crabtree Crossing Parkway extension, scenario seven does not. And you'll see a note at the bottom of this slide. We are actually going to have these scenarios rerun without that Town Hall Drive extension because that's what the council, that's a comment that the council put forward to Campo for the MTP. And that was their decision at that November, December meeting. So we're going to rerun these models without that Town Hall Drive extension piece. But you'll see again here, 147 out to Davis carries a lot of traffic, but really doesn't, once again, doesn't have much of an impact on Crabtree Crossing extension. But again, Crabtree Crossing extension does have an impact on Crabtree Crossing Parkway, south of Morseville Parkway. And again, it's in that 200 to 400 vehicle range for the peak out, for those AM and PM periods. And you'll see in these scenarios too, Town Hall Drive may be slightly elevated, but it's really not impacted very much either with the 147 going out to Davis and still having that Town Hall Drive extension in there.
So I guess it wasn't crazy that they decided not to build that as part of the toll road last time.
One of the interesting things in these models, if you look at, compare six and seven to two and three, the amount of traffic on NC 147 is significantly higher. And it's because the model, the way the model has been coded and what we've seen in under modeling work for DOT projects is that a lot of the traffic that wants to use that 147 extension, wants to get out to Davis, doesn't want to continue into town. And so that's, and that's what we've seen even in that hotspot study that was done a few years ago that's now attached to this agenda packet, is that a lot of the traffic that's using that 147 extension, even if it was tied into McCrimmon, it would just take a right on McCrimmon to then take a left on Davis. And it was, and the modeling work that was done in that hotspot study showed that it was causing real issues at the McCrimmon Davis intersection because of all that traffic trying to take a left.
Sorry, Ben.
Yeah.
Okay, so now that we've thrown some additional numbers at you, I'm going to go ahead and have some potential options for moving forward. Fairly similar to the options that are provided on all the other extensions. Since I've broken these out a little bit further. So I have options on here. They're in alphabetical order, so there's no preference of order at all. So option one is we can come and bring you back additional information. If you need additional information in order to make a recommendation on what you would like to see happen or what changes you would like to see in the September 2017 draft plan. So first option again is to bring back additional information. Doing so, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that everybody recognizes that the likelihood of us having a February draft plan becomes very low then if we're not able to go ahead and finalize the draft. But if you need additional information, we are more than happy to provide it and we'll adjust the schedule as needed. Option two is to change it to a greenway. As you know, the project, there is a greenway that's currently being constructed that's running adjacent to Crabtree Creek, it's the Crabtree, you know, greenway. There is a leg that is funded and built that goes south towards the apartments on Crabtree Crossing, north of Morseville Parkway. It is not currently funded heading north of that. But that's not to say that probably won't be funded sometime this year, if I was to guess. So if we were to do that, we would go ahead and incorporate it as a greenway throughout the entire plan and make all changes related to that. Most likely, we will be able to do this and have a draft plan back to you February. I don't anticipate that it would create any delays. Your option three is to keep the road, but add modifications to the plan. It's up to you what modifications you would want to add. But you could have options for when it could be constructed. If it were to be constructed, you could put restrictions in there. It can only be constructed if 147 is in fact built a certain way, connects to Davis. If NC DOT proceeds forward connecting it to Town Hall Drive, you can say explicitly at that point, it cannot be constructed and it has to remain as a greenway. While not listed at here, you can always talk about, do you build it for emergency purposes only? You know, intersections are shut down and that's the only time it gets opened up. Or it's for emergency service vehicles only. You can even have that route. But that's kind of option three. And option four is just to remove it entirely. So it's not in there as a greenway and it's not in there as a road. So that's another option that you have. Happy to talk about this more in which direction the board would like to go.
Thank you, Courtney. So this is, this is a topic which definitely received the most amount of feedback and discussion in our public comment session. Unfortunately, it somewhat dwarfed discussion of the rest of the plan. But we've kind of kicked this can down the road. I think we need to, to mix my metaphors, grasp the nettle tonight and make some sort of decision. So as I thought about this, the kind of if you divide it into the plus and the minus column, the positive reasons for making that extension would be that I think connectivity is kind of a good thing to have. The options for connectivity in general, that's what most people would strive for. We've had some very good feedback on the emergency response time, but I don't think there was anything there that would alter the fact that, you know, just sort of common sense says that it's going to be easier to reach places if there's more connectivity. We heard some very positive request for the connectivity from folks who thought that it would be better access for the northern part of Morrisville to reach the southern part. An example of that would be access to Park West Village. And another sort of positive point would be that it would preserve the right of way for the future. And that was certainly something that Dr. Gold, who was a member of our board until recently, that was his opinion. On the other side of the equation, I think we're all concerned about the potential for diverting commuting traffic and destroying a very attractive residential area. And despite what we might think about, you know, why would anybody want to go through those residential streets? We know that with the closing of the Morrisville Parkway because of the railroad, that was something that actually happened. And interestingly, I think it was last night or the night before, I happened to notice on CBS News, they had a feature, I think the town was Leonia in New Jersey, where there's a commuting traffic across the bridge to New York. And because of Waze, which is a technology that was mentioned in our public comment session, that the town was absolutely struggling with just gridlock through these tiny residential streets. And then when one street got blocked, then the technology tells you to go to the next street. So everybody in town was locked. So their solution was a little bit draconian, but they actually passed an ordinance that prohibited commuting traffic, traffic only for residents, and you had to have a pass. And interestingly, that apparently was reflected in the Waze software, and so they dealt with that problem. So there are ways to mitigate that, but I don't want to minimize that. Another argument is that it destroys the greenway. And just in defense of that, I think we all knew there was a greenway going in there. It wasn't necessarily on a map, but we all knew that that was there. Certainly when I went down and looked at that, you know, it was very obvious because they'd started construction. Another negative is that it's potentially expensive because of the flood plain and the wetlands area. One might say that the transportation plan is meant to be a little bit more visionary. We could probably have a debate about whether, or to what extent, we should consider the cost of implementation if we're looking at something that is a very, very long term, almost a wish list. And then I think we've seen from the model, and we probably appreciated Ben's comments about the limitations of the model, but the model shows that between 200 and 400 more cars per peak period would be diverted through that section of Crabtree Crossing. So that was my kind of summary, which is the easy part. Now I think we need to debate and discuss and come to a recommendation that we can pass along to staff. So I'm going to start with you, Rob. Just start somewhere.
Yeah, so looking at the options, my inclination is to preserve the right to use that connectivity, but only if we see the permission of NC 147 connecting to Davis Drive as we're recommending to DOT, or at least as I think we're drafting to recommend to DOT. So that it truly, if it is ever built, it's only done so as a community connector, not as a thoroughfare from a major freeway. But I don't believe taking it out of the plan completely and not having that one connectivity option that still remains, you know, from north to south in that general area, is very visionary. I don't think it's very, I don't think it gives a town any options. And we know our hands are kind of tied as far as NC 54 is concerned. There's not a lot that Morrisville can do for that specifically. And even Davis Drive is in many ways in the hands of DOT and carry and us in certain segments. But I don't feel like we have any control anywhere else from a north-south perspective in Morrisville. That would be our only place to connect with the town and have some ownership of what happens there. So I do believe keeping it in the plan with those caveats in mind, waiting on a resolution and even construction or finalization of 147 before you ever did a study or ever built anything there, that would be my inclination.
Thank you, Rob.
So option three, yeah, but with those specific caveats in mind, yeah.
I mean.
Looking at how much traffic would go on Crabtree Crossing extension, if it was ever built, was kind of like, but I agree with Rob in that I don't think we should take it off the table. And neither do I think we need to hold our breath till Santa Claus brings the money to build it either. I mean, it's eight and a half million dollars right now. I think also option three, nothing's going to happen right away. We're going to see what will happen with 147. We'll be able to have some control over, if we do, if it is decided to go ahead and do the extension, we'll have control over what actually happens there better than not having these modifications. And I'd like to see it kept in, but with all those caveats.
Thank you. Lee.
I'm in favor of leaving it in. I'm not sure we need to worry about the caveats because I think the data shows that there's little impact on 147 on what happens down there. I mean, if we're going to base this on data, let's base it on data. And the data doesn't show that there's an impact. We just saw that there was almost no difference between the whether 147 connected to Davis or was not built or went right to Town Hall. But yeah, I agree, this plan is, this is supposed to be looking often in the future. It's not, you know, this is not going to be, we're not going to vote and it's going to start construction next week. I mean, this is something that's years, decade probably or more. So I definitely want to keep the option open. I mean, this is something that, you know, I think, you know, there is an impact, but it's not a massive impact. Certainly not going to be a massive amount of commuter traffic coming from RTP going right through this road. I mean, they clearly, most of these people want to divert to Davis. So I would say go with three, but I wouldn't even put any, I don't want to put any restrictions because why restrict something when in the future, you don't know what's going to happen? If you put some exact trigger in there, well, you never know. Why would we want to tie somebody's hands? And besides, if it could be voted, you know, we're going to review this plan every however many years anyway. The whole point of these annual, these reviews is to make sure when things change. I wonder why you would, you know, limit it in that way.
Of course, one of the benefits of the plan is that it's a signal to other jurisdictions and Campo and so on, is, you know, what our priorities are.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I mean, to me, this has been in for a long time. I know it was taken out at one point and that maybe that was a signal that shouldn't have been sent. You know, I don't know what happened when that was voted on. But this has been voted on once by the, you know, it was talked about as part of the Morseville Carpenter intersection improvements in 2004, it was overwhelmingly passed. You know, I just would hate to take it out.
Courtney, do you need any elaboration about what the potential modifications might be?
Well, what I have, if I'm following correctly, is these two of the three that have spoken at this point were weighing towards option three. And that would be keep in with modifications. One of the modifications, there's kind of really two main ones, I think, that were pointed out. You know, it could not be constructed until 147, the true design of that is 100% known. Question that I was not clear on is it's known and constructed. So then you have real, actual data of how people are moving or we know what it is on plans, it's funded, moving forward with a design. I think we'd want to clarify that, you know, because what's envisioned and what in actuality can happen could be two different things. So I would do that if you were heading in that direction. I mean, that was really one. We can think of other benchmarks. We can talk to Kimley Horn, see if they have any other ideas. And we can highlight those in the draft plan, if you would like us to do that as well. And then at least if you went with option three and we know what some of them are now, we can add more to it, we can refine them. Because again, the next plan's still a draft plan. You know, where I sit, I think if you're going to use 147 as a benchmark, it needs to be a constructed benchmark, not a designed benchmark. That way you can truly see. That way you can truly see, you know, it's not modeling at that point, it's true traffic counts. So that would be my recommendation, if you were going to have that direction. You know, so I think, you know, to your point of ways, while you didn't add that, you know, if there's a way that, if this is built, that we would make sure that whatever the technology out there, if we can come up with something that limits traffic through, it could be research statute, are there any statute changes? It could be, do we need to have any types of legislative agendas that can go, you know, to our North Carolina legislator and potentially have statutes amended? That we could potentially put something in place to somehow stop commuter cut-through traffic? That's a lot more research, and it's just talking off some of the ideas I heard. Don't know if any of that's even possible, and I really don't know what the laws are with that, so a bit of digging, but that's some additional information we could start looking into as the next draft plan is prepared. But my recommendation is if you were to go with option three, would really be the construction of, you know, and it's open to the public. I mean, make that very clear. And, you know, counts are a certain period after it opens, you know, once we've really, people are now truly using it as a commuter route.
Let me ask you another sort of question. If this were in the plan, to what extent would that risk taking funding from 54 improvement?
Can you repeat your question? I'm not sure I 100% understood that.
Okay, so if the Crabtree Crossing extension is in the transportation plan, will that cause in any way less funding or less priority to be given to the improvement of 54?
I don't know how they score, so I'm going to have to defer that question to Ben, and if he can answer, we'll have to come back with the answer.
From the town standpoint, the prioritization that's in the plan and the priority that we lay out in the plan would be where the town would look to spend any money we have to spend. So I believe in the September 25th draft, NC-54 is still a higher priority than any of these connections. As far as non-town funding goes, at this point Crabtree Crossing Parkway is the existing section and the proposed extension would be a local road. So there is not, at this point, there would not be state or federal funding associated with it. The town would have to pursue that funding. And that's where, again, with the prioritization, maybe an additional action item or additional consideration that we can add in, you know, to the plan with this is that the town not pursue any outside funding for this connection before pursuing outside funding for the higher priority railways such as NC-54. But as a general rule, NC-54 is a, from a purely state funding perspective, NC-54 is eligible for state funding. At this time Crabtree Crossing, whether the existing section or even new section, is not eligible for state funding. So 54 is considered a regional route. And so the simplest answer is no. But, you know, if we want to ensure that, if there's a concern or the plan is in place wants to ensure that the town follows its priorities and that, you know, money is spent on higher priority roads first, we can certainly make sure that that's clear in the plan as well.
Okay, thank you. So Courtney, do you need a motion, or are you comfortable with sort of an informal?
As long as, as in all the other ones, as long as three, you know, out of the four of you are in support of option three with the 147 clarified construction based off of some expressions I saw, making sure we have it a lower prioritization item, making sure that with regards to funding, right policy statements that say we cannot pursue federal or state funding for this road until all the higher priority ones have been constructed, you know, something along those lines or funded, we can go through and do those. And again, any other things that we can think of after speaking internally, doing some research, you know, with regards to state statute as well as reaching out to Kimley Horn, we can do those and we can bring that back in the draft plan, as long as three of the four of you are okay with that direction.
Comfortable with that?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
So moving on to the next item, so public input opportunities. So the first opportunity, again, the portal is still open. We do have a new website that's scheduled to go live on February 1st, so this page will no longer be in place starting February 1st. I don't know definitively where it's going to be on the new webpage yet, but it is going to be there, and you will still be able to type in, you know, townofmorrisville.org/transportationplanupdate to enter comments in the comment portal. That has remained open, and there's no intent to close.
So you're saying that direct link will still work even after they change the website?
To my understanding, yes. And if I find out that is not the case, but what I've been told to date it will, if I find out it's not the case, I will make sure that I get that information out as quickly as I find out. I'll work with social media and send it out that direction as well. So the next one is there's going to be a comprehensive engagement campaign. So what we're taking a look at is we're going to have social media, postcard mailings, neighborhood meetings, open houses, public comment sessions, as well as the public hearing, the last two being the standard ones that are required. When are they going to occur? We're going to do them during the day? We're going to do them at evening? We're going to do them multiple days of the week, trying to hit as many avenues as we can to make sure that people are aware of what's happening and moving forward. At this time, I don't have the specific dates, and then there's a couple of reasons why I don't. So first, we are still aiming to give the February draft back in front of this board. Barring some unusual circumstance, it's going to be back in front of this board. Once we have it in front of this board, our intent is to go over it over a multiple series of meetings. But really, once I know that we have a front February arrival date and it's to you, then we can start building the engagement plan. I just don't want to do that until I know a draft is available to get out to the public. So really, the next steps, you know, your job is, this board is going to review the plan and review it from the front page to the back page. We're going to do this over a multi-month, multi-meeting process. At this point, I do not plan to have any special work sessions. We will go over as many chapters, you know, we're not going to do the entire plan in the first meeting in February. We're going to cover specific chapters, and then we're going to go to another meeting, cover more chapters, and even some of the appendices. So at this point, depending on the rate of the first meeting and how much we are able to cover, I plan that it tentatively to run two meetings. So that's kind of one part. The next part of our next step, again, is working with both my, the town Public Information Officer, as well as the Community Relations Liaison, working with the two of them. They are going to truly prepare this engagement plan, and they are going to be part of the outreach process as well. So we'll work with them to prepare the plan, and it's going to be prepared and just frankly be about filling in the dates once we have it put together. Again, the February draft is what's really going to be the starting point for that. At this point, I just want to, really want to know if any of y'all have any questions for me at this time.
Unusually silent.
Okay.
Covered pretty well.
Well, thank you for the multiple months that you put into this. I do appreciate it. And we'll have that planned to you in February. If I find for some reason, you know, our consultant certainly has a server that goes down, you know, for a period of time, I will let you know as soon as possible. But I plan to have it published with the agenda for the February meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Courtney, and thank you, Ben. I know you've put many, many hours into this, and it's a very, very important thing for the town, so we're all sarcastic and all looking forward to reviewing the next version.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the next item, 7B.
Should we put that towards the end? What's the?
If you would like to go ahead and move it to the very end under, right before staff comments, I am more than happy to do so.
Thank you, I think that would be appropriate. If I expire before then, I'm sure you know.
We'll figure something.
Take over.
Right. So let's move on to section eight, then. Thank you.
Well, Michelle will be here to present item 8A. I take that back, Cary will be. My apologies.
You have so much talent, it's hard to keep pace, hard to keep track of it all.
All right, so I have a presentation here. There is the public comment session, but I will give the report first, and then I'll let you handle opening up the comments. So this is a conditional rezoning proposal for 226 and 228 Church Street. And the town is actually the applicant on this request. It's led by our engineering department, and it's for the two parcels located at 226 and 228 Church Street. And they're located here on the map in the northeast corner of Page Street and Church Street. The current zoning of the properties is Town Center Residential, and the conditional rezoning request, the purpose of it is to allow a parking lot as a principal use in this zoning district. This is a legislative request, like all rezonings, so it is a discretionary decision. To give a little bit of background information about the surrounding area, to the north of the two properties, it's also zoned Town Center Residential, and there are some single-family detached homes located on that property. To the east, also zoned Town Center Residential. And on one of the parcels, there is a town-owned, this is a town-owned property with a storage structure on it. And then this other property to the east, also zoned Town Center Residential, has a greenhouse nursery business on it. And to the south, another Town Center Residential zoned property with a single-family detached home, and then a historic Crossroads Village zoned property that has the historic Christian church located on it. And then to the west is Church Street. Across the street of Church Street, there are some Town Center Residential zoned properties as well, one that's vacant and one with a single-family detached dwelling. Here's some additional property information about the two parcels. They are both owned by the town, and as mentioned, the engineering department is the applicant for this request. Total, it's approximately 0.88 acres for the two parcels. And the 2007 Town Center Plan designated it as a historic Crossroads Village area, but the current zoning is Town Center Residential, and the proposed zoning is for a conditional Town Center Residential zoning district. It's currently vacant. There previously had been some structures on it that have since been removed, and they've already been annexed into town limits. So as part of this conditional rezoning, there are some conditions proposed, and those are outlined here. The first, as mentioned, is to allow a parking lot as a principal use, and it would be allowed with a minor site plan approval, which means that that review would just be done at the staff level. The second condition is that the parking lot be constructed in substantial consistency or conformance with the required sketch plan that's submitted as part of a conditional rezoning. And that was attached in your packet, and I've included a snippet of it here. And with conditional rezonings of this nature, that is a requirement that, you know, some type of sketch be provided so that you have an idea of what the actual use and intensity of that use is going to look like if that use were to be permitted and added into the zoning district. I'm going to talk about a few of the site features on here, just to provide a little bit of information on that. So as you can see, there are two full-access driveways onto Page Street here, and then there's also a driveway, full-access driveway on Church Street to the adjacent property, the property with the historic Christian church. And there's cross-access provided between the two properties, so that could provide another access into the, onto the site, into the parking lot. With this first submittal of the site plan, which is under staff review, there's 46 parking spaces provided, including two accessible parking spaces. And there is sidewalk proposed throughout the sidewalk to lead back over to the historic Christian church parcel. The lighting proposed for the parking lot would be decorative lighting that would be similar to what is currently on Jeremiah Street to try to fit in with that, you know, historic feel. I do want to point out that there is a separate but related application that's going under staff review for a minor modification to the historic Christian church parcel related to the parking lot to reconfigure that parking lot. Because the property is designated as a historic landmark for Wake County, any changes to it needs to be approved by the Capital Area Preservation Board, and the changes were presented at their December 12th meeting, and they were very pleased with the proposed changes and unanimously approved those changes. But just to emphasize, this is separate from the rezoning. It's not, this property is not part of the, these other two that are part of the rezoning request, just a related project that's going on. So overall, staff recommends approval of the rezoning for 226 and 228 Church Street with the conditions that were proposed just by the applicant, the town, as part of the rezoning, and those are listed here. So again, the parking lot be allowed as a principal use with minor site plan approval, and that the parking lot be consistent with the sketch that's been provided. And the rationale for that recommendation is that permitting a parking lot as a principal use would not have any more of an adverse impact on the surrounding properties when we're thinking about things like transportation impact or school impact or lighting impacts than any other use that's already permitted in the Town Center Residential District. Similarly, this use wouldn't have a negative impact on the character of the area since you still have to comply with any of the zoning requirements for that use, thinking again about lighting and signage and things of that nature. Also, parking lot on that parcel would further development of the town center and ultimately provide more public parking opportunities and flexibility for future development. And finally, the 2007 Town Center Plan identifies a need for parking in the town center, and also the capital improvement program has also identified a need for this, so it would address the community need. So there's two things for the Planning and Zoning Board to do tonight. One is, per state statute, the advisory board is required to comment on the consistency of the request with adopted comprehensive plans, and whether or not it is reasonable and in the public interest. So later on, when you go to make a motion on the resolution, that's what this is dealing with. So some things for you to consider are that this is consistent with a comprehensive plan because the base zoning district isn't changing, it's going from Town Center Residential to conditional Town Center Residential. As mentioned previously, the 2007 Town Center Plan, which is one of our comprehensive plans, identifies a need for parking in the town center, and this will work towards that goal. So in that way, it's consistent with a comprehensive plan. And then finally, because it is consistent with that plan, and it would serve a range of uses in the town center, this amendment is reasonable and in the public interest. And then the other part that you are asked to do is to make a recommendation to the town council on this request. And in the packet, there was an attachment with an excerpt from the administrative manual with some items that you might want to take into consideration when making a recommendation, and I've listed those here in summary of those. So those are just some things to think about. And so we are looking for a recommendation either to approve the application as submitted with those two conditions, to make a recommendation for approval with either a change to make a recommendation for approval with either change in those conditions or additional conditions. So with any type of conditional rezoning, those conditions do have to be agreed upon by the applicant. Can't force anybody to do anything. Or you could recommend denial of the application. And that is all I have for my portion. If you have any questions for me. Also Kent Jackson, the town engineer, is here and he's the lead on this project. So if you have any questions for him or if you'd like to hear from him about this project, I'm sure he could say anything that you wish to hear from him. And then, yeah, after that, if you want to open the comment session as well.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. So maybe we'll go right ahead actually and open the public comment session. Anybody here who wish to speak about this particular item? So that was relatively easy. So we'll go ahead and close the public comment session. Do we need to hear from the developer in this particular project? Or should we spare the engineer? Any comments or questions for?
The only question I have, it sounds like so this is going to be a public parking lot. It will be available as the town center develops potentially for other uses. It's not just for the, what is now basically a meeting center at the church.
Correct. I think that is kind of one of the ideas of why there was an interest in developing the parking lot was because there is very little parking currently on that property and the building is underutilized as it is now, so this would allow more opportunities. But it certainly wouldn't necessarily be restricted to just parking for that property.
Development of this parking lot with that, is any of the requirements for other development in the town center area in terms of the parking numbers? Do they get to use this public parking allocation that's being built as a reason to decrease the number of parking spots they're adding to their properties as they develop this out into a real town center?
There's always opportunities for shared parking for any development throughout the entire town. So there's a potential, somebody could request. So while it's not designed for that, the potential, it could occur. Whether or not the request could be granted is a completely different scenario, if you will. But anybody has the ability to request to share with anybody else in the town regardless of ownership.
Good. Is there any impact on the sidewalk on Church Street?
Good question. So the transportation plan does call for sidewalk along Church Street. And that's something that we've been discussing at the staff level right now. If it would be more beneficial to do a payment in lieu later because there is a sidewalk project planned in the future for Church Street. You know, we just completed the west side of Church Street, but there are plans in the upcoming future for the east side of Church Street. To, so we're in conversation now if it would be better to install it now or to suggest a payment in lieu or deferred payment in lieu for future installation at that time when the rest of the project occurs.
Interesting. So the town paying money to itself. So I mean, the events that I've been to at the Christian church, it was a real challenge. And we actually had to park across the other side of the street on Baptist and Church. And there were members of the Public Works Committee directing traffic and so on. So this looks like a wonderful project. Would anybody like to, Rob, you're the expert on this, come up with a motion that incorporated some of the things that Carrie is mentioning? You know, if we're going to recommend it, we also have to note that it's consistent with.
Yeah, so there's two, there's the resolution that deals with the consistency statement and then there's the ordinance that deals with the rezoning itself.
So if anybody would like to try and chip in and see if we can help.
If you primarily reread this verbatim, it will be fine.
So we read this whole thing before we actually make the recommendation?
So you'll make a recommendation to either approve or deny. And further state that you feel it is or is not consistent. You can make a recommendation to denial even as consistent, just as background and vice versa. So hypothetically, if you were making a recommendation to approve, it would be a recommendation to approve the rezoning request, feeling that it is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan for the following reasons, say based off the zoning district, the property will not be yet changing, the 2007, you know, read those three bullets. An asset you believe it's reasonable in the public interest, just kind of going back in. Those are key points. Kind of stay what you're doing. Read those three bullets points and then follow it up with it's, you know, reasonable and in the public interest.
Making a motion to recommend.
So I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of the rezoning request. Because, and find it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan because the base zoning district and the property will not be changing. And the 2007 Town Center Plan identifies the need for parking in the town center and the request will further be scored. And because the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and would serve a range of uses in the town center. And we find this to be reasonable and in the public interest.
Very good. Thank you. Time a second with that motion. Put a motion in a second. Any discussion of the motion? What in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you, Rob. So now the next one.
I think now it's Michelle's turn.
Should we take a break before Michelle's second?
The next two items are very closely related. I would recommend a break now.
So let's take a 10-minute break and we'll get back together just before eight.
So we just had one? I thought we had to do two with that.
Well, I think because he made it.
Oh, he did. Just want to make sure we didn't leave out some vital, you know. It's crazy the way that they make you write it out. So, I mean, it's all.
Yes, indeed. So part of our next topic, which is related to a special use project, is that people who wish to speak have to be sworn in.
Thank you, Chairman Pritchard. The town has received an application for major modifications to the special use permit for the Shiloh Crossing Shopping Center that was approved back in 2006. And there are really three applicants jointly making this request. Shiloh Mooresville LLC, who is the owner of lots 2, 5, 6, 7, 10, 12, and 15. Shiloh DRP LLC, and that is the developer of the proposed residences of Shiloh Crossing Multi-Family Development, which is also. multi-family development, which is also on your agenda this evening. And they are the contract purchaser of lots 12 and 15. And then RTP Lodging, the owner of lot 8, and the developer of the Home to Suites project that's under construction right now. The request is to modify, as I indicated, the special use permit for the shopping center that was originally approved in 2006 by resolution 2006-033A. And there were 34 conditions of approval for that special use permit. This request would modify two of those conditions, conditions 3 and conditions 8. At the staff level, we are allowed to approve some what we call minor modifications to previously approved plans. However, a change to a condition is considered a major modification. And so it requires that the original process that was used in the approval be followed again with review by the Planning and Zoning Board and recommendation to the town council. The request that is being made would essentially exempt the lots that are listed here from needing to comply with the Unity of Design Guidelines and the Shiloh Crossing Master signage plan moving forward. And the Unity of Design Guidelines are a set of design guidelines that were adopted as part of the special use when the development was originally approved. This is a map of those lots that would be affected by the change. And I just want to point out a couple of things to you in regard to the map, some of them just for reference for later. But all the lots in gray would be subject to the proposed amendment because this whole property comprises the shopping center. The lots in question are the lots that really are still vacant or just recently now we're starting to see development on. And for the most part, they're located on the south side of Shiloh Glen Drive, which is kind of a natural physical barrier between the two parts of the shopping center. And Shiloh Glen is a town street. It is a collector road. The shopping center itself is located both in Wake County and Durham County. So it's a little hard to see on this map, but just kind of following it along with the arrow, it's kind of the dividing line between the two counties. So this is a project that was originally jointly worked on between Morrisville and Durham. And when we're talking about lot 15, we're really talking about the lot here in gray. But I'll be mentioning this lot up here a little bit later. This is what we've kind of been referring to as South Lot 15, which is in Morrisville, but the northern portion of that lot is in Durham. So I'm going to talk about the proposed change, the Unity of Design Guidelines first, and then move on into the signage. So the Unity of Design Guidelines, as I indicated before, were adopted as part of the special use, really to ensure that development complied with a comprehensive plan and that the findings of fact that needed to be made for the project, that those findings and that criteria was being met. They were also intended to ensure some consistency in the appearance of future development in the shopping center. When the Unity of Design Guidelines were approved, retail use was envisioned in the area of the property that we're talking about tonight. And actually, if you look at the master signage plan, there's an exhibit in that plan that shows a typical elevation of the shops on lot 12, which is really probably the largest lot out there that just goes to further the idea that this really was envisioned for retail. There were also no design standards in the code when this project originally went through the process. So since the time of the original approval, the UDO was adopted and the town has adopted design standards that are applicable across town. What that means is that these lots, we're starting to see new development happening, they need to comply with both the Unity of Design Guidelines that are part of the special use as well as the design guideline requirements that are in the UDO. And we've had three projects that have taken place that are kind of in the review process in this area since the UDO was adopted. Each and every one of them has experienced difficulty really trying to mesh those two guidelines and codes. It's been very confusing to all of them. I'm not going to go too much into the specifics of the two different sets of guidelines, but they both do contain standards relating to ensuring that we have high-quality durable building materials that are being used. If you look at the Unity of Design Guidelines, that document gets very specific. There was a copy of that included in your packet. You may or may not have seen that there's a material legend in there. So where the UDO talks about materials and has different percentage requirements than the Unity of Design Guidelines for materials, the UDO talks about materials more generally, brick, stone. The Unity of Design Guidelines lays out very specific materials that need to be used. So for example, Rome Gray S93 Glengarry Brick, or Cape Cod by Triangle Brick, Earthstone by Quick Brick. And then you get into colors that are allowed, and it's Welcome White by Sherman Williams, number 6658. So it's very specific. And at the staff level, we are allowed to approve three substitutions. But once again, we're dealing with two different codes, and some of these materials are no longer readily available. We do allow substitutions of something substantially similar and really visually, you know, you couldn't notice the difference. But that is one of the main differences with the Unity of Design Guideline material standards. Once again, both requiring high-quality durable materials, but kind of coming at it from a different direction. They both also contain standards that deal with reducing the perceived mass or bulk of a building. And just to go through a couple of those, if you're looking at the Unity of Design Guidelines, for example, there's a requirement in there that buildings between 10,000 and 1,000 square feet, that there's a change of material, design, color, or architectural feature recommended every 50 feet. UDO requires that two of the following three elements be used: color change, texture change, and material change. So getting at the same idea. In this respect, when you're talking about breaking down the mass or bulk of a building, the UDO probably does go a little bit further. It also has requirements that you need to recess or have projections in the building every 100 feet. And there are other transparency requirements for the use of glass and additional requirements there as well. So once again, they're addressing a lot of the same issues, they're just doing it in different ways, and designers trying to mesh those two. It's been repeatedly problematic. There are some site standards in the Unity of Design Guidelines. For the most part, those are now UDO code requirements. So for example, the Unity of Design Guidelines requires stamped asphalt or stamped concrete pavers. We have a very similar requirement in the UDO now. Cut-off light fixtures. Pedestrian connection between the main building entrance and the sidewalk, that's required by accessibility code. Screening of mechanical equipment loading areas. I could go on, but really, when you're looking at the site standards in the Unity of Design Guidelines, almost all of those are now in the UDO. The one main difference is probably the lighting. And this is one where we have been, at the staff level, approving minor changes. The Unity of Design Guidelines requires that a specific metal highlight fixture be used in the parking lot. Just really, no one could foresee the change in technology with LED lighting, so we have allowed as a minor change for people to use the LED. But that's probably the most significant difference with the site standards. I just, to provide a couple examples to put things a little bit more in context, I've outlined on the aerial the location of the lots and some of the different developments that are ongoing in the area. So the amendment would affect lots 5, 2, and 10. Right now, those are vacant. We don't know what's going to happen with those lots. But we have a proposed hotel, the Waterwalk Hotel, on lots 6 and 7, the Home to Suites Hotel on lot 8, and then the residences of Shiloh Crossing on lot 12 and 15. So the image on the top is the Home to Suites building that's under construction. So obviously, that was approved and permitted. They were able to meet both sets of design guidelines. My understanding is, you know, that that was challenging, but they were able to do it. And the image on the bottom is of the residences of Shiloh Crossing, which you will be reviewing next. That development, as shown in the rendering, was designed to comply with the UDO only. And this is the development that probably really prompted the submittal of the application for the design guideline change. If you look in the UDO, if you have a multi-family development with three or more buildings, there are variability standards that come into play. So you can't use the same materials and colors on adjacent buildings that applies to both the facade and the roofs. So when we're going back to the Unity of Design Guidelines, we have that specific list of materials to choose from. And then there's a requirement for variation from building to building. Not saying that that would have been impossible to do, but definitely difficult. I will note that if this request is not approved, the residences developer will need to go back and redesign the building. The other development going on in the area right now is the Waterwalk Hotel. They've been in the review process for some time. We have worked through all the site plan issues, and they went through a number of reviews. And for the last month and a half now, we have still been working on the architecture. I think they're going to get there, but just a testament to the struggle they've had meeting both sets of design guidelines, that that's still the remaining issue out there with So I'm going to move on to the signage. The master signage plan for the shopping center really deals with signage throughout the center, the ground signs, the directional signs, the fascia signs, or sometimes we refer to them as wall signs. This amendment would really impact the fascia signage. And the largest issue that we've been seeing at the staff level with the fascia signage is a requirement within that set of standards that only red, white, and blue could be used for the signs. I said earlier that this request really would not impact the ground signs, but there is one potential exception to that, and that's that northern lot 15 in Durham that I pointed out earlier. As currently worded, the condition in the resolution that approved the development has a statement in it that basically additional ground signs. The developer has agreed, you know, to the ground sign showed on the plan and not to put any additional ground signs in Durham. And if the request is approved, potentially, the developer could put a sign in Durham up on that northern lot 15. I will note that the proposal that came in, as it was worded, basically would have allowed anything in Durham or would allow anything in Durham that Durham would permit. So that is the language that is specifically proposed. The language that is in your resolution, your draft resolution, is modified language recommended by staff. There was a concern that, you know, part of the shopping center along 54 is in Durham, and we were concerned about an additional ground sign in this area. In talking to the petitioner, I don't think that that was ever their intent to look for another sign along here. So they're aware that we've recommended some modified language to you. A couple other examples, and this gets back to the color issue that we've been dealing with with the Unity of Design Guidelines. So on the top is the Home to Suites development. And the first sign on the left-hand side of the screen is the initial sign permit application that came in that was denied. And you could see that included, you know, some green, and I think there might be a little bit of brown on it as well because of the color restriction that could not be approved. They have now come in with a new permit for an all-white sign, but they are hoping that this amendment gets approved so they could go back to something more similar to what they had originally intended or wanted, and something that probably, when you're looking at the purpose of a sign, you know, helping you find your destination is going to stand out a little bit more. We are also experiencing, well, I won't say we are experiencing, we're suspecting that the Waterwalk developer is going to have issues with their sign permit as well. You know, we've kind of flagged this to them so that they are aware of the color restrictions, but this is their logo. It has kind of a gold color and a blue. The blue is permitted. If this came in, as shown on their current building elevation, we would have to deny it because the gold is not allowed. Their probably, most likely second option would be to go to white, but then white on a light gray background doesn't show up very well. So depending what happens, you know, they might need to relook at the building materials as well. So if the request to eliminate the master sign plan as a requirement on these lots is approved, these are some of the additional allowances that would be granted to those properties. The color restriction would go away. Light pole banners that are now allowed in the UDO would be permitted in the shopping center. You could potentially see an additional ground sign in Durham on that northern lot 15 if that's something that Durham approved. And then we have some regulations in that document related to font location of address signs. They would just need to follow the UDO for the address signs moving forward. So staff is recommending approval of the request, and in no way do we want to discount all the hard work that everyone put into this back in 2006. I think there were good reasons for these conditions when they were implemented, but really feel that since the original approval, that the circumstances have changed, and that there are really two main things that have changed since that time. The one is the adoption of the UDO, and the second is the recession, which resulted in a different type of development on these back lots than was originally envisioned. With the adoption of the UDO, as I indicated, we now have design standards that, you know, do serve the purpose of ensuring we're breaking up those buildings, we're using high-quality materials and getting at some other items. And also, you know, this part of the shopping center, because it's being developed with different kinds of uses, will probably have a different character than the rest of the development. And it's also divided by that collector street, Shiloh Glen Drive. So there is some separation area. It's already looking like it's going to develop a little bit differently than before. There is a possibility, if this request is approved, that a second request adding more lots might come forward later. So I just want to throw that out there now so that if that happens, no one is surprised. So I just want to throw that out there now so that if that happens, no one is surprised. We have an application in from Walmart to paint the building. They are not approved paint colors. We cannot approve it. They also want to change other signage. Not approved colors. We cannot approve it. So we've started to have some discussions with them as well. Large corporation takes some time for them to make decisions. We don't know what they're going to do, but just want you to be aware that there is a potential that if this gets approved, that other applications, similar applications, could follow. So tonight, the Planning and Zoning Board should hold a public comment session on the request and make a recommendation to town council for approval, approval with conditions or denial. As a reminder, the original decision was a quasi-judicial decision. This is a special use permit, so this is also a quasi-judicial decision. The criteria for approving the special use that are in the code and that you should use and look at as part of your decision-making were included in your packet. And there was also a draft resolution for approval in your packet. If you do choose to recommend denial of the request or part of the request, you will want to go back and look at those findings and indicate why you may not believe one of those findings has been met and include that in your motion. Likewise, if you are going to make a recommendation of approval with conditions, those conditions should relate to one of those findings and ensuring that one of those findings will be met by the addition of that condition. And this is the proposed language change to conditions number three and eight. Once again, proposed condition three, this is the staff recommended condition. The first part of that is the same as was submitted by the petitioner, but we did modify the language in the second part related to what would be allowed in Durham to prevent a ground sign along NC 54. So we have a number of individuals here. I think all three applicants were sending someone here tonight, so they are available to come up, present their case to you. It is their responsibility and burden to prove to you that they have met those required findings. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Michelle. Before we get to the public comment session, if you could just remind me, lot eight is the Home to Suites?
Yes, that is correct.
And then lots 12 and 15, other proposed residences at Shiloh?
Right.
Where's the Waterwalk Hotel? Which lot is that?
It's lot six and seven.
Six and seven. Okay, thank you. And then the only proposal that people are talking about right now for lot 15 north, as you called it, in Durham, the only thing there would be a sign, is that correct?
Yeah, that is really, it's a natural area, stormwater detention for the entire development. I think some additional stormwater for the residences might go there if that development gets approved as well. But yeah, it's pretty much that aside is natural area and stormwater.
Good, thank you. And the special use permit brings a whole new set of rules and regulations, which is why the elected officials had to leave the room because they can only consider things that are presented actually in the sworn testimony that's presented to them and, of course, our recommendation. So with that, I'd like to open the public comment session. Anybody who wishes to speak on this topic, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Board. My name is Tommy Craven. I'm with the Land Use Consulting Firm of Priest, Craven &amp; Associates. We've provided consulting services on a number of the lots within Shiloh Crossing and are currently working on the, as the civil site consultants for the residences at Shiloh Crossing. With me here tonight are Jim Speek, who is representing Shiloh Morrisville LLC, Chris Carlino, who is representing Dominion Realty Partners, who will be the developers of the residences at Shiloh Crossing. Eric Davis is an associate architect with Rural Joy Tramel and Rubio, and they're handling the architectural design for the residences at Shiloh Crossing. And Kevin Dean is with us as well. He's a traffic engineer with Kimley Horn &amp; Associates and has prepared the traffic impact analysis that is part of the presentation on the residences of Shiloh Crossing. We will all be available to answer any questions that you might have pertaining to this request. Michelle did a great job of outlining a very complicated and confusing situation between the special use permit, design guidelines, and the current UDO. When the original special use permit for Shiloh Crossings was approved, it was 2006. It was a substantially different time, both as far as regulation goes and as far as the economy went. And Shiloh Crossing was envisioned primarily as a very large shopping center. All the uses were to be commercial. At that time, in the town's standards, there was very little in the way of design guidelines and aesthetic and architectural controls. So the attempt was made in the special use permit to put standards in place that would reassure the community and the elected leaders that quality was going to be a significant part of the design of that development. And those standards worked well for a number of years, but things started to change. We had the great economic downturn, which, of course, had a profound effect on retail development. And then the UDO came along, which put a whole new twist on the standards and the design guidelines and signage matters. With the UDO came a rezoning of the property to allow uses other than strictly retail and commercial uses, which have created a very complementary mixed-use opportunity here at Shiloh. As all this began to occur, it became abundantly clear that the conflicts between the design standards of the special use permit and the standards of the UDO were going to cause significant problems. Michelle, again, outlined a number of those. I think two of the more typical ones that I think best illustrate the problems are the lighting situation. At the time, metal halide lights were the rage. They were the top technology, and that's what was committed to as part of the special use permit. Currently, that precludes the use of the new best standard, which is LED technology. That needs to be changed, and this will fix that. But I think maybe even more challenging is this dichotomy between the very specific standards of the design guidelines and the SUP, which were designed to, at a time when unity of development was the catchphrase. You wanted to make sure that things within a development were consistent and blended well together, and those SUP documents were set up for that. Now, as you see in the UDO, the UDO preaches diversity and a variety of styles and architectural standards and colors to break those projects up. And that's even more appropriate as the uses go from purely retail into residential uses and hotel uses and other things, other uses besides just the strict retail component of the plan. So for all those reasons, we're here tonight seeking this modification to the special use permit. Again, the staff report was very thorough, and we greatly appreciate their insight into the problems and the available solutions. The SUP standards are contained on pages 406 and 407 of the agenda package. I don't see any reason to bore you with standing here and reading all of those into the record. I think it's more than sufficient just to note that they are there and make sure that they are included in any discussion that takes place. Again, we're here and available to answer any questions that any of you might have for us. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Craven. Any questions for Mr. Craven?
I'm still thinking. Arne.
Well, my thoughts are around, you know, what we're really trying to do here, right? So we have the UDO now, whereas we did not have it when the initial special use permit was put together for this development. We are backing off of, we're proposing to back off some of the special use permit requirements around color and lighting and some other things to allow for the mixed-use development to still have some uniformity, but not under the original conditions. And are we doing so in a way where the new proposal for the special use permit brings the special use permit in line with current UDO standards across the whole development? So there's still unity, there's still uniformity, there's still this idea of standards that we've set for all of Morrisville that are still being adhered to. We're not just dropping them completely for this development. I mean, I guess that's the question going through my head right now.
I think, at least at the staff level, you know, our feeling is that this process with the two sets of design guidelines has become very cumbersome and very difficult, and that at the end of the day, the design of the buildings that we're seeing is on par or probably a lesser design than if they only had to follow one set of guidelines. So when you have a situation where you have rules in place and what you're seeing out in the field and in the community potentially at the end of the day, might not be as good as, you know, envisioned, and at the same time, we're making the process more difficult. I think it's appropriate to bring that back for discussion. If the request is approved, you're correct, that idea of having some conformity and uniformity between buildings in the center, you would not see that on these properties that are more or less south of Shiloh Glen. It would be UDO standards only, so they wouldn't have to use the same brick as the buildings on the north, for example. To play devil's advocate, the Unity of Design Guidelines allows staff to approve three substitutions. That's in the Unity of Design Guidelines today. So as projects come forward, we could approve up to three substitutions, and that could be to the main material. So if you're already able to make a substitution to the primary building material and then to others, I'm not sure that we're ensuring consistency to begin with.
So I'm just trying to understand the consistency in the process. The, what standard are we trying to hold this development to? And what I'm hearing from you right now is that we don't actually have a standard we have to follow because there's so many opportunities for substitutions and approvals within those substitutions. So what is it we're really trying to do as we modify this today that still gives us some sort of Morrisville adherence and code and, you know, development unity that we've tried to set in place that this development is also going to follow? And we can, and we essentially have, we have something to fall back on when the next development comes down the road and says, oh, well, you let them use these colors and these materials and these standards, and you dropped everything for this group. Why don't you drop it for us too? I guess that's my only concern, if you understand where I'm coming from.
So the standards for this development are only for this development. So they're, with the SUP, they're not across the town. And so I would say the vision in 2000, mid-2000s, it was four or five probably when this project started. So when the vision of this and the vision of the UDO, there's some parts that are very much the same, but there are parts that are very different. I mean, so for example, we allowed the use of EFS on buildings at the time this was You know, even, you know, in the early 2000s, we allowed EFS to be on 100% of a building. EFS looks a bit like stucco. We found that grocery carts could go into the side of it and crack it, and it just wasn't holding up over time in certain instances. So when this project came on board, they agreed to limit the amount of EFS. So they scaled back of where it could be located so that, like, the grocery cart injuries weren't happening, and the quantity of it were also limited. Move forward to the UDO, you can only use it as a cornice treatment now. So our vision has changed over time, and I think to the point, there's lots of trends, you know, in development. This trend here, you know, everything looks the same. You know, it's, you go to those developments where there's, you know, like, there's one in Cary, you know. McDonald's has a green roof. Everything has a green roof in there, and it's just this very, almost bland, homogeneous look to everything. Now we encourage greater variety, but we have material standards that are ensuring the longevity of a structure. What was specifically happening here, so I don't think that there's a loss of a vision here, odds are, if these structures were built and you had no idea these Unity of Design Guidelines attached to the special use permit in place, you would say these look like Morrisville buildings. So I don't think there's a loss of any vision. It's when you get to this EFS conflict, you know, they're saying you can use EFS, and you go to the code, they're like, sorry, code's more, you know, kind of the more the stringent the two rules are applying. So then suddenly, no, you can't use EFS this, but according to code now, I wouldn't be able to approve it, so you can't. So, I mean, if I had my magic wand, I would love parts of the SUP, honestly, to disappear with regards to lighting, design guidelines, because what we have in the place of today in the UDO is a ton better than what was adopted here.
Sure.
And while we don't have that ability to take that magic wand and just remove it all, you know, this is really an opportunity to address these particular lots, to allow them to be more in line with the current UDO, which is a much better set of standards than that we had in time and place at this time. And hopefully that kind of helps to clarify a little bit.
Yeah, what I was trying to get is, is this bringing us towards the UDO more so? Is this bringing more conformity to what we're approving elsewhere in Morrisville so we won't have this question of, oh, well, you dropped the color requirements for this, you know, development, why don't you drop ours as well? Right? And so that kind of thing just comes up as a concern.
And there are not any other developments in town that have a set of building paint color requirements that are required to be adhered to for an approval post-UDO adoption other than this one because those conditions are part of an SUP?
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
If I could just add, this proposal does not create the vacuum that I think you're worried about. It sets aside the SUP standards and adopts instead the UDO standards, and that language is very specifically in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Arne.
And that's what I was worried about, too. Are we setting some kind of precedent here that we don't want to? And this doesn't sound like it's anything at all like that. And secondarily, like, things like the lighting, I mean, yeah, this is 12 years later, we need to update that. Thirdly, about the signage, I mean, if a business has a logo that they use all over the United States, it just seems to me like they should be able to use it here, too, because it's part of the, part of the brand, as long as it's not, you know, too egregious. And I don't think anything like that, looks like that. But yeah, that's what I was trying to get to. Is this getting more in conformance with today's standards than, you know, an SUP that was adopted 12 years ago or something?
That's exactly what they're trying to do.
Lee.
No, I mean, I like the idea of what they're doing.
Okay. I think to sort of camp on to Rob's point, the one thing that is being taken away is some sort of uniformity across the different parts of this development, but that may or may not be a good thing or a bad thing, so.
I'm not super concerned about uniformity with I'm not super concerned about uniformity with a Walmart and the rest of what's already there, because, I mean, let's be honest, you look and half of what you see is the cars in the parking lot, and they're not uniforms.
Not the same development. It made more sense if you're going to do a big box shopping center, but now that you've got apartments over here and hotels over there, it's, you know.
But within the lots that we're looking at, south of that roadway, south of Shiloh Glen, there wouldn't necessarily be uniformity or complementary, that's if there's such a word, between the Waterwalk Hotel and the Home to Suites and the residences, but they're sufficiently set apart maybe.
Yeah.
Interestingly, as I was doing my last minute notes on this, I made a note to myself that said, this applies to the specific lots that we're talking about, and I noted that the owners don't object to the other lots applying for the same changes. And I wrote, what implications might there be or potential issues? For example, if Walmart went to a different use, what would happen? And about that time, my daughter sent me an email saying, have you seen, your sounds club is kind of closed? So I'm not sure it's part of this particular topic, but I'd be interested at some time getting the reaction of the developers and the team as to what impact they think that might have on their development. But on that theme, if, if the other lot owners wanted to go through a similar process, it would be the same S U P type thing that we're doing tonight, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So are we ready to make a motion? Lee, Harleen, let's give Rob a break.
Is there something we can read?
I mean, yeah, how specific does this need to be?
I'll put it in the PowerPoint, and I'm going to look at Director Tanner. Is it sufficient to read the resolution title and reference the findings therein?
Yes, you can reference, give me a minute, and I will pull that up. So you can reference this resolution number and state whether or not, you can go finding by finding, or if you want to, or if you do feel as if they've met all the findings, you're welcome to state that as well. You can take it either way.
Okay. Well, then I would make a resolution to approve Resolution 2018-17-0, approving a major modification to the special use permit for the Shiloh Crossing Shopping Center, approved by Resolution And we find that the proposed development will not material endanger the public health or safety, complies with all regulations and standards generally applicable within the zoning district and specifically applicable to the particular type of special use. It will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property and is a public necessity. It will be in harmony with the intensity, scale, and character of development existing or planned in the surrounding area. It will not cause undue traffic congestion or create a traffic hazard, will not generate needs for transportation, water supply, sewage disposal, fire, police protection, and similar public services that cannot be adequately handled by available infrastructure and facilities, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Very good. Thank you, Harleen. I have a second for that motion. Second, any discussion of the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you. So we'll move on to the next level of detail.
As alluded to, this is a related item to the item that we just discussed. This is a presentation on the major site plan application for the residences at Shiloh Crossing, which is one of the, or actually two of the lots that were part of the special use permit amendment. So the applicant is Shiloh D R P, and they are proposing a multifamily development that consists of 318 dwelling units on about 48 acres. It's located on Lower Shiloh Way and Shiloh Glen Drive between El Paso Way and Slater Road. So the parcels are highlighted here on the screen. It's currently zoned Regional Activity Center, and this is a major site plan application. It is an administrative request, meaning that if all the requirements are met, it should be approved. So for some surrounding information, some of this might look a little bit familiar, but again, zoned Regional Activity Center. That whole Shiloh Crossing area is also zoned Regional Activity Center. So to the north, there is some retail uses, zoned Regional Activity Center. And then also north of the parcel, it's Durham. And so their zoning district up there is industrial light, and there's currently a forestry use on that parcel. To the east and to the south is the Expressway and C 540. And to the west, also some Regional Activity Centers, zoned properties that are retail use, a vacant property, and a hotel, or hotel that's under construction. As far as some additional property information, the current owner is Shiloh Morrisville. As mentioned before, the applicant and developer is Shiloh D R P. The zoning is Regional Activity Center, that's also the land use plan designation. For the 318 units, there's currently one phase proposed. There's no flood plain on site, but it is located within the Neuse River Basin with some stream buffers on site. And these parcels have already been annexed. Listed here are some dimensional requirements for the project. So the maximum building height, the setbacks, the lot coverage, those are all compliant. And the number of parking spaces, as well as the tree preservation area, those are exceeding the requirements. And there's no required or maximum density for this zoning district, but I've provided the proposed density for your information at about six and a half units per acre. So I'm going to go over some of the specifics of the site plan itself. So starting, this is the overall site plan, and to talk about some of the access and transportation related topics, there would be vehicle access by way of Lower Shiloh Way as well as Shiloh Glen Drive. There's a total of five full access driveways into the development. And there aren't any required improvements for Lower Shiloh Way, since that's just a private access easement. And then on Shiloh Glen Drive, that's a public street, but all of the improvements have already been made to that. As part of the original special use permit, some of the conditions related to required transportation improvements, and those have already been completed a while back. There are existing sidewalk also on both sides of Lower Shiloh Way and Shiloh Glen Drive, and there's also a five foot wide sidewalk proposed throughout the development. I will mention that a cross access waiver was approved administratively due to existing wetlands on site and stormwater facilities on site that would make it difficult to connect to adjacent properties, and then of course, the freeway running along the property as This is the site plan information, and you'll see that there are perimeter buffers, street yard buffers, foundation plantings, vehicle use area plantings throughout the development. There were two alternative landscape plan requests for this project. One was for the buffer that was required adjacent to this. I know this is kind of hard to read here, but a 265-foot power easement here that cuts through the lot, so there's a required buffer adjacent to that easement. And because of some other existing utility easements that kind of zigzag throughout that area and some wetlands, an alternative landscape plan was approved for that. The same number of required plantings are provided, but just in an alternative configuration and location. And then also for the buffer along Lower Shiloh Way at these two driveway entrances into the access for building one, there was also some difficulties there due to a utility easement and site distance easements. And so once again, the same number of required plantings were provided, but in an alternative And here is the lighting plan. So there is LED lighting proposed throughout the development along the street networks, is also in the parking lot areas. And as mentioned in the previous presentation, there were some, as part of the special use permit, other lighting requirements. So they are proposing the LED lighting, and then the Unity of Design Guidelines had also outlined for this lot that decorative street lamps be provided along the building elevation streetscape. So if that special use permit amendment were to be approved, then that requirement would no longer apply for this lot. As mentioned before, there was also a lot of conversation about the elevation design of the buildings. And so what's been reviewed by staff has been based on the regulations within the UDO as it relates to design guidelines. So that means that if the amendment were not to be approved to the special use permit, the applicant would have to withdraw the current application and resubmit with a design that's compliant to both the UDO as well as the Unity of Design Guidelines. So as it stands, with the design according to the UDO, that is compliant. And to highlight a few of those things, as kind of came up in the previous discussion, for multifamily development, there are requirements to provide a variety of facade materials and colors, roof styles, building shapes, also some requirements to provide balconies, fenestration or glass coverage along the building. So I have just a few images here to show you, you know, there's six buildings, residential buildings, so I'm not going to put up a picture of all of them, but to show you the kind of two different color schemes proposed for the buildings within the development. And then also just to clarify that if any of the special use amendments weren't approved related to the design, it wouldn't impact the actual site layout or the use of multifamily use. It would simply require a change to the building, you know, colors and materials and the look of the building, but it would not change the application to be able to submit for a multifamily use. For some of the impacts of the project, the parkland payment in lieu fee currently is $2,105 per unit. So for 318 units, that would total just about $670,000. That amount is due prior to building permit. And so depending on when the fee is paid, we do reevaluate that amount every year on the fiscal year. So it's possible that that unit amount may change depending on when they submitted that And then in addition to the parkland payment in lieu, the developer is providing some private amenities for the site, which are outside of code requirements. So they are including a clubhouse, a pool, and then also a dog park. And that dog park is located within that very big Duke Energy easement, that 265-foot easement. And so that is going to require Duke Energy approval to locate the dog park within that easement. And so we are asking that they get approval from Duke Energy, and those conversations have been started. So in the event that Duke Energy does not approve that, they will need to resubmit a minor modification to the approved approval to show the removal of the dog park, but it wouldn't impact any of the rest of the site. And then for transportation, this project did require a traffic transportation impact analysis be conducted, and that showed that there would be an additional 2,052 trips per day from this development. And based on the consultant review of that impact, staff is recommending that a proportional payment for a future stop, potential future stoplight at the intersection of Carrington Mill Boulevard and Slater Road be provided in the amount of $4,247.70. And then finally, school impact. As a reminder, we don't have any regulations related to school impact, so this is provided just for informational purposes. But using the student generator calculator from Wake County, I've provided a table here that's based on the number of bedrooms within the development and how many students that would generate within the different age groups. And then also looking at the school assignment map for this school year, I've provided the, what the schools that they would attend would be. So that's 22 elementary school students at Northwoods Elementary, 12 middle school students at West Cary Middle School, and seven high school students at Cary High School. So overall, the site plan is consistent with adopted plans and complies with the UDO. So we are recommending approval of this project with some conditions. The first relates to the special use permit amendment. So we are recommending approval only if the special use permit approval or amendment is approved in order to eliminate those requirements that are inconsistent with the UDO. And in the event that that amendment is not approved, then the application would have to be withdrawn and resubmitted in order to be in compliance with both set of requirements. Secondly, prior to presenting the plans to town council, we still need some street name approval for those new private drives that would be throughout the development. And Wake County ultimately is the one who gives the okay on that. Next, we have the payment in lieu for the stoplight prior to construction plan approval, and then payment in lieu for the parkland dedication prior to building permit approval. And then finally, as I mentioned, approval from Duke Energy for the dog park prior to the first building permit being issued. And as mentioned previously, if that approval is not granted, then the plans will be, need to be amended with, you know, another application and fee in order to change the plans to show the removal of the dog park. So as mentioned, this major site plan is an administrative request, meaning that if all of the conditions of the UDO are met, the application needs to be approved. So we're asking you to make a recommendation tonight. Those options are to recommend approval as submitted, recommend approval with conditions in order to meet requirements of the UDO, or to recommend denial of the application if any of those standards aren't met.
Thank you, Carrie. I have a question for you.
Okay.
Lower Shiloh Way and El Paso Way, both going to be private?
They're both private, yes.
And even though they go in front of the two hotels? Because I can understand a private road in an apartment complex, but this is more than that.
So those were established as part of the original subdivision back in 2006, '07 with the special use permit. So those were, those are preexisting.
So is there a property owners association, I guess, that maintains them?
I believe so. I'll probably ask Jim about that. Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
The lot lines in that area actually go towards the center of the street, so it's really more of a drive than a platted road, because they are part of the lot. The road is part of the lots.
Thank you. So, any other questions? Lee?
I just had a sort of a general question. You mentioned a stoplight at Carrington Mill and Slater, but there's not any payment in lieu for a light at Shiloh Glen and Slater?
Yeah, based on the information I have, since I don't review the transportation, but that is what the consultant who reviews our transportation impact analysis recommended.
I mean, it just seems like that's quite a distance away, and there's one that's closer, but...
Yeah, I unfortunately don't have information on that, but if needed, you know, we could talk with Ben, who did the initial review, and ask him for more information.
So I have three things that I just want to bring up. First of all, traffic impact analysis of 2,052 trips dumping basically onto Chapel Hill. Yay. Secondarily, 540 is going right by this subdivision. I know this is probably not in the UDO anywhere, but I'm just curious if there's any going to be noise abatement efforts around 540, because that is going to be a lot of noise.
So there is a 100-foot street, or yeah, street yard buffer between the, along that property line there that will, is using existing, you know, mature vegetation there. So I think that that, besides the distance, but I think that the vegetation there will have some type of, you know, noise mitigation effect. I'm not aware of any plans that DOT has as far as, you know, seeing development along the highway there.
And then the last thing, I'm trying to visualize in my mind, and I'm not going to, the stoplight at Carrington Mill and Slater Road. Can you bring up a map? How would it get there? Like, how would that help traffic flow with this, with these residences?
Basically, go out at the back of this, take a right, and then across the 540 is on the other side.
Is it under the 540?
Over it, I think.
It's not quite that far, so. I don't have a good map, but it dumps onto Slater. So the concern is the extra traffic on Slater.
Right.
Before you get to airport.
And how do they get to here?
Can I say something?
And just, I think maybe some information that might be a little bit helpful. So this is that intersection here, and I know not all of these projects have come before you, but there are three very large office buildings that are under construction now over here, as well as another multifamily development on Carrington Mill. So I think with a lot of new development in the area, you know, this intersection over here is probably seeing more activity.
But if they get there, how from the residences? Do they go over or under 540, or like, how do they get there?
Yeah, it looks like it's under 540, based on this image here.
It's over. Slater goes.
It goes over. Actually, the transportation engineer that prepared, the TIA, will be able to answer your question regarding the proportional impact to Carrington, if y'all are interested. He is in the audience.
Well, I was just trying to envision how we got there. Okay, all right, all right. We'll follow that. Thank you.
So actually, if the transportation engineer would like to volunteer, thank you. We can grill him.
I can sort of...
I can envision.
But if you look, I mean, it would be right. It would come up here and go across, and that's the light. So I'm assuming they think people are going to go on... That's not good. Anyway, they go on across to come by the airport.
Hey, so I'm Kevin Dean with Kimley Horton Associates, 300 West Morgan Street in Durham. So a couple items to touch on. The reason that a traffic signal was not required at Slater and Shiloh Glen is that it wasn't necessary to maintain acceptable level of service. So if it's not required in the UDO, if improvements aren't necessary, then you don't install the traffic signal. Since the intersection of Slater at Carrington Mill was a steady intersection, and since it does fall to an unacceptable level of service in the background with all the approved developments that are going on in that area, what we look at is our percent impact at that intersection. So you've noted, it's a long way away, it's going to be roundabout way to get there, but our site will have impact on that intersection. So what we look at is what our percent of the total traffic would be. Then in order to determine our fee in lieu, we actually increase that impact by 50%. So instead of applying at 2%, it would be 3% of the cost of a signal. And that is applied to an opinion of probable construction cost, which gives us that $4,247.70. So that's how, that's why we don't have one at Shiloh Glen and why we are paying fee in lieu at Carrington Mill.
And the majority of the traffic, you expect to go onto 54?
Yes, we would expect so. And I know we showed the total number of site trips that this is expected to generate being 2,052. I would note that the original plan for this area would have been 200,000 square feet of retail, which gross trips would have been 10,000 odd trips. And so the improvements that were constructed as part of this plan were sufficient to accommodate that amount of traffic. And so when we come in with traffic, that's a fifth of what the improvements were designed for, we don't anticipate that it would cause undue impact on those intersections.
So the original plan already created that intersection, paid for the intersection most likely.
Yep.
And thus, we're not overdoing what was planned for.
That's exactly right.
Now, will they be able, like, coming down Chapel Hill? Or up Chapel Hill? How will the residences, residents get into? Is it going to be right turn only, left turn only?
So I believe that Shiloh Glen Way is a full movement signalized intersection, but there's also Finley Avenue to the south of that, that's a right-in, right-out driveway. So they'll be able to use either one of those access points. And we looked at the intersection of 54 at Shiloh Glen Way, we're a small percentage of that impact. And DOT is actually looking at re-timing the corridor on NC 54 in the near future. We had looked at what minor impact signal re-timing would have on that intersection. And DOT has already said that they plan to do re-timing. I can't give you an exact date, but it's in the works for DOT. And so they wouldn't require us to do, to change it by three seconds for then them to come back and do a comprehensive corridor re-timing. They want to do it all in one fell swoop and look at it comprehensively, instead of just letting individuals come in and tweak here and there.
Is that something in the near term, or is that associated with the expansion from 540 down towards...
Well, what we were made to understand, that was supposed to be in the next year or so, but I would hate to put words in their mouth, because they approve our plans.
Any other questions for Mr. Dean? Thank you. Any other comments, or any? Lee? Anything else? It's kind of unofficial, but I'd love to get Mr. Craven or one of the other teams' perspectives on what you think the change of use at Sam's Club might do to this development. One of the rumors is that maybe this Sam's Club will come into a, kind of a warehouse-type distribution center with maybe more truck traffic, I'm guessing. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I'll just add that that use wouldn't be allowed in that, in the zoning district.
Well, there you go. Be awful quick for those ones.
So you want to change a Sam's Club into another apartment building, maybe?
I'll be glad to engage in pure random speculation on that. And perhaps Jim Speaks' retail background would be more appropriate for this. But I think that given the economy in Mooresville and given the proximity of that property to retail uses, it would, I would be very surprised, I'd be very surprised to see it become anything other than a retail sort of use. And I think there's certainly some opportunity to maybe break it into smaller pieces or find some other way to backfill it and use it in a very, in a similar retail use and something that would be very productive. I can't imagine the scenario that would see that as a, some sort of a distribution center for very long, in my mind.
Thank you very much for that. Add to that. And I know I've stepped out of bounds here, but I appreciate it.
I'm not sure what else I can really add to it. It's total speculation as to what it would become. I don't even know that it's verified that they're closing.
All right, thank you very much for that. Any other comments, questions, discussion? So we're ready for a motion? Lee, I think it's your turn.
Not specific, is this another one that we have to...
No. Either recommend, you know, approval, recommend approval with conditions, which might be those that staff have recommended, or if you had any additional conditions you wanted to add or recommend denial.
Which other conditions were you...
So there were some staff conditions recommended related mainly to the payment in lieu of the dog park and the, you know, what happens with the SCP. You don't even need to list all of them, you could just say, you know, recommend approval with the conditions recommended by staff is sufficient.
Okay, so I mean, do I need to state the name, the number for this? I can look it up here, I guess. Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-28-0.
And you're just making a recommendation for approval? Or sorry, I think that's what you said, I'm sorry.
I did, but...
Well, we interpret it as such, because we know we have limitations.
Yes, yeah, I mean, right. I mean, our approval only goes to the next level. So yeah, I'll make a resolution recommending approval of Resolution 2018-28-0 for the major site plan for the residences shallow crossing, including the staff recommendations one through five.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion with the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you to the team for coming tonight. Appreciate that.
So we are officially moving on to...
I don't want to say.
The, if you're ready for me to move on, I should say, on to the vice chair appointment. As you may remember, you originally made recommendations for an appointment, which are then taken to town council, who formally appoint chairs and vice chairs for this board. You made a recommendation in November, the vice chair at the time has now resigned, so I'm bringing this back. You may or may not be aware, but both Mr. Langston and Mr. Taylor were appointed on Tuesday as permanent members, not alternates, of this board. So now we have three eligible members to fill the vice chair appointment. So I'd ask that we go ahead tonight and vote on it. Technically, we need to go ahead and swear Robin first before we make this vote, since you haven't been sworn in from your alternate position to your new position. So prior to the vote, you know, oh, you have not been sworn in either?
Not as a full member.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and do that, and then we're going to go ahead and do ballot. I apologize, I thought at least one of you had been sworn in.
Yeah, she wanted to do it earlier, but we denied it.
The two of you to be late again.
We're coming down here?
So I, aye.
Raise our hand, right hand?
Yeah, right hand. Yeah, I'm sorry. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Actually, a prayer, I'm sorry. That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Oh, faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office as a member.
Of my office as a member.
Of the planning and zoning board of the town of Mooresville.
Of the planning and zoning board of the town of Mooresville.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the law, so help me God.
Since you know, I now officially can participate in the recommendation of appointing a vice chair. Marty's going to bring the ballots that you can complete. Once you fill it out, pull it up, you can hand it to her, and then I will see where the votes lie.
I think maybe a, a first question might be, is, you know, anybody want to volunteer? Anybody not want to volunteer?
Volunteer for what?
To serve as the minister.
Oh, oh.
You did say you were open to it last time.
What's he telling me, I volunteer for?
To read up a resolution.
Yeah, I said I was.
While you're tallying the votes, I have to say, I think any one of you would do a great job, so.
Okay, by unanimous vote, Ms. Bofa, you are officially the vice chair. A recommendation, I should say. It's really up to the council.
Don't be jumping the council again, yeah.
Suddenly, I was skipping a step there. So I'll relay this information on to Sarah Baker, our, what is her exact title? It's community relations liaison. And then she's going to bring forth an agenda item for this board, as well as the board of adjustment, to a planning and zoning board meeting regarding the appointments. She will then typically notify everybody of the results of the meeting as well. So the next item on the agenda, Chairman, if you don't mind me moving forward. We actually have two items, one's on here and one's not. The one item that is not on here that I would like to cover first is the Yard of the Season. As you remember, going back a couple of months ago, we discussed some challenges that we were currently having with participation, that we had really had great participation in the past for our holiday Yard of the Month. But unfortunately, this year, we received zero nominations.
Really?
Admittedly, last year, I think most of the nominations were from the police department. And we just, we didn't have any. We hit social media and, you know, other kind of forums out there, and we just are not having any luck.
So I could have put my name in there, just won by default.
You could.
With almost nothing.
I'm sure how you would vote for yourself and then give yourself $25, but...
I would just forego the $25. The honor would be enough.
So that's the bad news I have for this evening. So really, what I'm going to ask you is, how would y'all like to continue moving forward? From where I said, I don't believe there's a lot of public interest in this. So we can always think of something else potentially as well. But please provide me with guidance on what you would like to do moving forward.
Man, I saw it. I saw stuff on Twitter about it, I mean.
Well, it's a struggle. It's a different one for us. It's because we inherited that from the appearance committee.
I mean, I sort of think we're beating a dead horse.
Right.
It says not that much public interest.
I wouldn't say that, I mean.
Majority, the majority of residents.
People certainly decorate.
The majority of residents are very.
But people decorate and do things. That's why I'm surprised that no one submitted. I mean, is this something we can just put on the back burner for a while? And then if there's any citizen comments or asking about it, I mean.
If they miss.
Start it back up, yeah.
Absolutely. I mean, that is, I mean, that's a great option, you know? If you wanted to put it on hold and we suddenly find out, people are like, what happened?
Hey, if we just let the $25 build up eventually, people will really be interested in. It's kind of like the lottery or whatever, isn't it?
I mean, we do have the same person for the sustainable yard. So if we took that approach, I think we get one nomination every year, it's the same person. So I think if we took that approach, they would hit the lottery, as you say, every single year.
So I think I'm hearing we should put it on hold. Maybe there's an alternative sort of award, which is like a citizen of the month or a citizen of the season or something. Someone who picks up litter or does something for the town, I don't know. That's not really a planning and zoning board thing.
That sounds like some of the mayor's office should handle.
Yeah. But if you have any ideas, I'm happy to, you know, y'all can bring it up in the next board comment portion of a meeting. Send me an email if you have an idea. But in the meantime, we'll put it on pause. And if we happen to receive any inquiries on what happened to the yard of the season, we can go back and talk about it again, or come back and talk about it again, I should say.
If they're from Lee, just ignore it.
So the next item is our monthly newsletter. And we had two items submitted in December. We had VAPs is moving on to their third phase. So they submitted a building expansion. And we also have the Town Place Suites by the Marriott. We had a concealed attached antenna approved. It's a rooftop antenna on a building. There were not any town council items related to planning approved in December. And then there's a brief update regarding the transportation plan. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Where are the Town Place Suites going in?
Carrington Mill and what?
That kind, sort of intersection of Carrington Mill, Lichten and it's really on that end, but 54, there's sort of like this little isolated island there of about five parcels.
I have a.
Across from kind of like where the development with the primary care and urgent care hotel, other hotel, across north of that development.
I had a question about that antenna reminded me. There was one, I think, from last month or maybe two months ago that was like a mini pole antenna back, was it on Carrington Mill or somewhere in that area? Is that done yet?
I don't know if it's been installed.
I was just going to drive by and look at it and see.
So I, but I honestly do not know if it's been installed. I mean, it's black like a light pole. It just has, I would say some, it's a larger, almost wider pole continuing moving up above it. And then you'll see a box attached to it.
I just was interested, I mean, I'm not against it. It sounds like it'd actually be good. So on Davis Drive, I noticed a black fiberglass pole, not Davis Drive, on 54, right near Park West Village, it's popped up. Is that in our jurisdiction or is that in Cary? I was wondering if that was the same thing. It was somewhere near the mattress, well, the mattress firm by the earth fair, if I remember correctly.
That's in our jurisdiction.
That's what I thought.
And it is very possible there could be one on NC 54 that we don't know about. We do not issue permits for those devices within NC DOT. Are you aware?
I haven't heard about that one, but there's some recent legislation in July of this year that basically limits local government control of a lot of these facilities. One of them relates to approvals in DOT right of way. So they no longer have to come through us for zoning approval for those. And since 54 is DOT right of way, it's very, very possible that that's been installed. I wasn't aware of that.
It's just a pole, I mean, I'll have to go back and look. I just noticed it a week ago.
Yeah, I mean, what should describe?
It was a fairly, and it was a bigger than your typical light pole, pole. And it was black, you know, black fiberglass spun, you know, pole.
It very well, that sounds like. So you, they are bigger, not much bigger.
What is it?
They're basically cell towers. You know, that's, so the new technology, instead of the really large towers that we see with multiple carriers, as our technology is faster, as we all have more access to it, basically, you're either converting light poles, existing light poles to tower slash light poles, or you'll see the freestanding ones added. And they happen more frequently. To give you kind of an example, is, you know, our spacing of our light poles, I've seen them in some jurisdictions where they're really kind of installing more quickly than they are here. About every third light pole has been replaced with one of these. You know, it's funny, the first time I saw them is before I knew they were really coming into fruition. And I was trying to figure out, I caught it right away. And I'm like, okay, this must be one of those cell towers that I know something about. So if you look for them, you'll notice them. But to the average person, they're not even going to notice. Because most of them are fairly concealed in nature.
Any other questions on Courtney's planning newsletter? So you're done?
I am done.
So board comments, number 11. Start with Lee.
No comments.
Vice chairman.
I'm good, thank you.
Just to go over the board membership thing again. Council decided on Tuesday to make Lee and Rob prominent members and to defer the appointment of the other two members plus the formerly ETJ member. And as Courtney reminded me today, that council actually can't appoint the ETJ member. He doesn't, what they've, what they've decided between administrations is that that person no longer has to be from the ETJ. But council will actually recommend somebody to wait counter who would then appoint them.
So, because they're not going to give their control up, yeah, I can see that.
I guess so. So we're likely to get, you know, over the next couple of months, three new members. So as you probably saw from the emails, the invitation went out for folks to answer some of the questions that both, those you two went through and also to maybe show up at today's meeting. And I see a somewhat empty set of chairs, so that's a little bit disappointing.
And I was trying to figure out, I mean, we had several people attend, but most of the faces I did recognize as participants in our previous public comment session related to.
Well, they were read very conveniently, yeah.
There was one after though. As well, maybe Donna was on as a person?
I'm not sure. There was three faces that I did not recognize, but I don't know the names of the applicants and how they match. So, you know, I don't know if the mayor knows if we had anybody that had applied in the audience for the vacancies. So I don't think, you said that you recognized one person.
I just know that person wasn't here for public comments. I know, I know who she is, but I just think she was here as part of a connector.
Okay.
Interest group.
So, yeah.
Well, I guess, you know, if you know somebody who would be a good member on the team and who would be not averse to spending up until 9:30 or 10:00 on a Thursday, then, you know, please kind of recruit and help them, encourage them to go through the, the application process. The other thing I was going to mention was some interesting discussion again at council about payment in lieu versus dedicating land in some divisions. And for some time, some of us on the board have said, you know, we'd rather have the open space than the money that just gets put in the kitty towards parkland. And I think there's a beginning of some discussion about that on council. So it'll be interesting to watch that.
Specifically in regards to some potential applications?
Well, the.
Or we're getting rid of that?
When somebody comes to a site plan, they have to dedicate 1/35 of an acre per dwelling unit. Or they can pay a fee in lieu, which is calculated on the pre-development value of the land. And it seems that most developers would rather, you know, rather than provide open space, have rather, you know, just put in up the money. And it's based on the pre-development value of the land, which of course is a lot lower than before you put in the roads and services. So that, that might be something that, you know, we may weigh in on or have some discussion.
We should raise that price until we start seeing developers actually give us the land. Until we know we've picked the right price.
And just as an aside to that, it came up in regards to the Hand and Place towns. And Carrie and I had a phone conversation with the developer today. They are going to add some playground equipment to the plan. I think it originally came up during your discussions. So council should be seeing something slightly revised.
Did we gilp them into that?
I think the person who put the bug in the air should be promoted to vice chair personally.
I mean, whatever works, Gil, you know?
That was good.
Let's get those wings in there.
That was it for me, so thank you. I think we're going to bounce right to number 14, unless you have anything else, Courtney or Michelle?
I don't have anything else to add.
Well, we gave Rob a difficult job tonight. Maybe we'll give you the easier one.
Motion for adjourned?
About a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For adjourned, thank you.